Good evening, everybody. Oh, we got somebody. Great. I will call to order of meetings, a regular meeting of the Sunderland School Committee on September 24th, 2024 at 6:03 PM, and we are being recorded. First order of business is approving the minutes of May 16th.
I'm motion to approve. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Financial statements. Shelley, I'm sorry you're not feeling well.
Thank you. Try to go through this without coughing. Okay, so we do have a few things to talk about. First, let's get the warrants on the record. So since May 24th, there were 63 warrants reviewed inside electronically. The total of those warrants was $448,528.92. The next thing that I want to talk about is account overages. I'm looking at another computer, which is why I'm not looking directly at the screen. Account overages I want to talk about in the general fund. And first, I want to note that salaries are a little bit wonky right now in the teacher line and the IA line, and that's partially because we have some vacant positions. We had a resignation recently that's hitting the teacher line that hasn't been filled yet. And then there's a couple vacancies for IAs. There's also an IA who's in as a long-term sub right now. So we're sort of still trying to iron out all of those kinks, and some of those pieces will fix themselves as either people come back from a leave of absence or we hire for those positions. So we're not really going to talk much about those unless you have a specific question because they're still being hashed out with payroll. But the couple accounts that I do want to mention are actual overages on page one, the accounting software, and then at the bottom of page one, district-wide information and technology. Those are actual overages for our budget. We are working to bring down the software account. That's for our database, for our financial recording. District-wide, it's over budget. The contract comes in after our budget is finalized. We never have it early in the process. There's always an increase, and I don't typically know what that increase is going to be. We're also using, we're also paying for some platforms that we're not using. So my department and IT are looking at if we can cut some services off and get some refunds. So hopefully that'll not be a negative balance by year end. The district-wide information technology line, Scott Paul, our IT director, and I are looking at that account closely. That's an account that has to do with educational software district-wide. So those are all shared expenses. We're making sure that everything is in the right account or that if we drop the service, the PO didn't get done automatically so that we can make those adjustments. So that one, there might be some changes as we go through. Summer line, which is under function code 2440, I believe it is page three. It's negative for 3510. That is an actual overages due to wages paid to summer staff to fully fund our summer program. So we will have to offset that with another expense account. Not concerned at this point in the year, particularly we usually have savings in, you know, substitute lines or professional development that teachers don't take advantage of. The last one that I wanted to mention is in the school psychologist expense for salaries and wages, which I believe is on the very next page. That is also a true overage because we had the replacement for a retiree start, and the retiree actually did work for the first few weeks of school. Her retirement date wasn't until mid-September. So there is some overlap there. Ben needed to have the new hire come in. We needed to fill that position, so we will have to make up those expenses. But at this point, I'm not concerned about our budget. We're more concerned about revolving funds, which we're going to talk about next. Is there anything that I didn't touch on that you have additional questions for me? I'll talk about school choice account quickly. I sent you that expense report as well. The salaries again there for IAs, there's plenty of money remaining. That will map itself out as IAs get filled in from vacancies. The principals line that's charged to school choice this year was a decision that we made. Last year, we saved rural aid money, put it onto school choice so that we could use rural aid to support this year's budget. So that's not an expense that we should continue to see on school choice in the future unless we were to make the same decision once we get our rural aid numbers. And then the out-of-district placement, that is the one that was up in the air during budget season, and then by June, we knew that we were going to place that student out of district in the new year. So we actually saved money from last year's budget. We didn't necessarily do a budget freeze. Ben still did purchase some end-of-year items with end-of-year extra money in FY24, but I saved every penny that I possibly could to put into this account so that we could pay this out-of-district placement. This is a one-year placement pertaining to this particular student that's being paid on school choice. However, we do have in the budget a placeholder for a second out-of-district placement. That has not happened yet, but I have been updated by Karen Ferrandino, our special education director, that that placement probably will also happen. So we have money in the budget for that as well. She's doing her best to keep it within the confines of the budget. We may have to be creative with transportation and things like that for that second student. The other thing to note is that we will see circuit breaker reimbursement on the student that's out of district for the school choice fund. We will actually see it twice. Because we didn't budget for this and plan for it, it is considered extraordinary relief this year. So we will use that money to help pay for transportation costs for that student in the current year. And then we will actually get transportation, or I'm not transportation reimbursement, sorry, circuit breaker reimbursement next year because it's always a year behind. So we're sort of going to get some extra money for circuit breaker on this one, and we'll be able to use that money next year to offset some special education costs, particularly because that one student is a sixth grader. We won't have that expense next year. Any questions about that before I switch to sharing the revolving fund update?
I had a quick question. Did you put a placeholder there because you knew that was coming or was that just a sort of a?
Yeah, so during budget season, we had talked about this being a possibility of this student being placed out, but because we weren't sure 100%, we didn't add that money back in. Once the budget was approved and we had more information on the student, their IEP, their needs, by June, we did know that that student was going out, which is why we saved last year's extra end-of-year money to help pay for this cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm going to share my screen so that we can talk about revolving funds because this is something that we're definitely going to have to pay attention to going into the new year for budget. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. So school choice. So you can see here, start of year was 361,000. We're expecting about 200,000 in revenue, which is a decrease in our revenue from the prior year. We're down, oh, I don't have the enrollment report in front of me, but it was quite a few kids, I think, in school choice, right, Darius? We just talked about this today.
Yeah, we went from 49 to 38.
Yes, thank you. So we're down, you know, 10, nine or 10 kids there, which $5,000 a student is $50,000. So I reduced our revenue projection to 200,000. That's with, you know, some special education increments coming in, so that could fluctuate slightly, but I feel like it's a pretty good target for us. Our expenses are about 400,000, which leaves us at the end of the year at 160. We are overspending in this account, but it's for things that we knew that we were going to overspend. So the 106,000 will come off for next year, so our expenses will go down. That's for the out-of-district placement. And then that principal's wage will also come off unless we decide to supplement with rural aid because, you know, those aren't normal expenses to school choice, and recurring out-of-district placement will be a wash next year. So expenses will come down, but they'll still be slightly exceeding revenue. So we're going to have to be paying close attention to what's happening in this fund. We like to carry one year in arrears of revenue. We're less than that. We're still comfortable. I think 150 is a good goal for us considering the ebbs and flows and knowing that we're reducing classroom sizes, so our opportunity to bring in more school choice students is decreasing, but we are going to have to pay attention, and we might have to have some conversations about how we slowly plan to move off some of our school choice expenses. Any questions about those projections before I keep going? Okay. Early childhood's another one. You know, this is simple to see here that we are planning to, projecting to lose money this year. Our start-of-year revenue, 44,000. Anticipated revenue was about 88,000, and our expenses are well exceeding at 144,000. This is twofold. One, last year during budget season, because of all the different moving parts, we did put an additional IA onto the early childhood program as an expenditure. So this is about $30,000 higher in expenses than it has been in prior years, but at that time, based on enrollment projections, we had anticipated ending this year with about 25,000 in positive revenue. We have lost some students. We had five students withdraw over the summer. Three of them were full-paying, which would have brought in about another 21 to 25,000, depending on how many days a week that they were enrolled. We did bring in two new students since then, so we're offsetting the enrollment numbers, but one of them is fully funded because of IEP and specialized services, and then the other one is on a scholarship. So we're looking at a deficit in this account. We will have to rectify that. I don't have a plan yet, to be completely honest with you, because this came to fruition so late in the summer, and there's so many other factors to take into play. We may have to supplement with rural aid, or we can look at the savings that we are going to have from general fund because we do have a couple people on unpaid leave of absence, and we have vacancies that we're going to be able to recoup some wages currently. So I think we'll be fine, but again, it's going to be one of those conversations during budget season of how do we continue to maintain our staffing and programming at the level that we're at if our supplemental funds are coming down? Because if our supplemental funds drop, the only place to put those expenses are on general fund. And going into a negotiations year, we are anticipating that general fund is going to be a very difficult challenge for us next year as well. Any questions about early childhood before I keep going? Okay. Special education revolving. We do have a student coming in from another district who is in our special education program at Sunderland Elementary. So on the positive side, we have revenue coming in that we didn't anticipate. Our expenses are significantly less. I believe that this is just one IA salary and then a couple of other minor expenses, maybe $1,500 for various things for the program. So the end of the year will be positive there. The good news with that is that we have, if we have additional out-of-district placements or additional special education needs next year, we already have a positive surplus to tap into if we need to. Excuse me. And then school lunch is self-explanatory. We're in a really good place. Based on Patrick McCarthy, our food service director, based on his projections, we are spending more than we're bringing in. However, we have been able to build up a good surplus from COVID savings and then fully reimbursable meals throughout the day for breakfast and lunch. So we're in a positive spot. He's currently reviewing inventory district-wide because all of our school lunch funds are in this positive position, and it's more money than the state wants us to hold on to in the revolving fund for school lunch. So he's doing inventory of smallware, small equipment, large equipment, to see what else we can purchase to sort of spend that down a little bit. We're only supposed to carry three months of reserves, which we're exceeding currently, but, you know, it's not a bad spot to be in, at least in one of our funds. Any questions about any of that? It's really, really early to, you know, be talking budget things, but I'd want to give you a heads up as early as I possibly can that we are going to have some challenges this year. I'm complete, Jessica, if there's nothing further for me.
Thank you. Any other questions for her? Shelley, could you clarify for me the income to the special education revolving account? Why that is separate from the school choice? Because I know that when we get school choice students with special education services, we get an extra differential for them, but that differential goes into the special ed revolving account? Is that right?
No, so this isn't considered a school choice student. This is considered an out-of-district placement for the town that the student resides in. So because Sunderland has a program, Ben, is it called Horizon still?
No.
No. Okay. Whatever it's called now, there is a specialized program. And so that district is sending that student out of district into Sunderland specialized program. So it's different than school choice. So we're actually receiving tuition from that other district of $62,000 to cover this student's needs within Sunderland Elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know that we were taking that type of out-of-district placement. That's all.
Yeah, when we were in budget season and even in June last year, I don't believe that any of this was in place. This is something that the special education director was working on. She gets calls all the time for Deerfield, Sunderland, Conway, and Frontier because all of those have specialized programs set up, other districts saying, hey, you have capacity to consider taking our student, and then each school has to consider on an individual level. So, you know, those conversations happen with Karen and Ben, and then Ben with his staff to make sure that there is capacity based on the existing composition of special education needs in the building as well as the incoming students. So it was a decision, I think, that was made over the summer.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions? No, all right. Thank you, Shelley. Moving on to the principals report.
Great. Well, welcome, everyone, back to another school year at SES. And so I'm just going to start with summer learning update, water fun, Olympics, and more. So there is an abundance of learning opportunities for our preschool kindergarten students and then students in our upper grades as well. Our youngest learners had a program that followed an ocean theme. There was water activities, science experiments, crafts, and more. Some of the craft projects included creating jellyfish and sea turtles. And for our older students, they had an Olympic theme for their learning opportunity with hands-on projects, games, and more. Towards the end of the last year, in one of my principal reports, I talked about the grant we had secured through the Franklin Conservation District for a pollinator garden on campus, and work on that pollinator garden has just begun. In fact, we really got to it last week. Special thanks to Megan Arquin for tilling the garden. We borrowed a high-power tiller from Warner Farm, and the plan this week is to plant up to over 100 perennials on our campus in that garden and a couple other spots. This project is spearheaded by our library and media specialist, Rachel Kitter, but it's also important to note that whenever we have these bigger things going on, there's many more staff members who play an active role, and which was the case last week where we had some caregivers as well help out, but pulling weeds and just getting the site ready, spreading loam, spreading out cardboard, so on and so forth. So it's really a great team effort. Summer building maintenance update. Our two custodians, Mr. Michael Doni and Stephen Sicard, were hard at work. In addition to the regular general upkeep of clearing classrooms, stripping the floors of wax, washing them, adding a new layer, so on and so forth, they had some other projects, including painting of the kitchen, adding a coat of paint to the lower third of the gym, the cafeteria, the nurse's office, the main office, and all bulletin boards. And then one of our IAs, Shelley Chalick, also helped out. And in addition, we had a bunch of capital maintenance projects, and Darius has a formal presentation on that in a little bit, which we'll get into. But our DPW also helped out by pruning some of the trees on campus. And then this past Saturday, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month here at SES with an English Learner Parent Advisory Council sponsored dinner. Our English learner teacher, Matt Hell, led this charge. We were blessed with beautiful weather, delicious food, which was donated from Bueno Isano in South Deerfield. And one of our school community members who has families, whose family's roots are from Nicaragua, opened the event for us. So it was really a beautiful evening with just a bunch of incredible people. Upcoming important dates. We continue to have early release Fridays. Next Tuesday, we have our monthly community meeting at 9:00 AM led by our sixth-grade students. We have back-to-school night next Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:30, 6:45 PM or so. And then we've been working with our local public health nurse to bring in a flu clinic to SES, and this is kind of hot off the press within the past few days where it's been finalized. So October 15th, there will be a flu clinic here for our community from 3:30 to 6:00 PM. We were scheduled to have walk and roll tomorrow, but due to the projected rain coming, we are delaying that to October 17th. So there's the report. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Lots of great stuff going on. We're on to public comment. There are no members of the public in person. Would anybody online like to make a public comment tonight? Seeing none. We will move on. There is no unfinished business. We're on new business. Summer repairs and renovations update.
All right, so... What I did is... I put together a slideshow. Jessica already saw it, so I apologize. And so, so Afkez already seen it as well. But I did want to be entire districts to have an idea what's going across the district. And what I'll do is I'll slow down when we get to Sunderland, and we can kind of talk about detail, and feel free to ask questions and so forth. But a lot of the projects happening in many of the other buildings are similar to what's happening here, and it's kind of getting a feel with everything that's going on. Under a town warrant, this is up in Conway, they put in a video surveillance system. They also updated their phones and replaced 25 phones and got theirs up to speed as you did last year?
Yes.
As you guys did last year. So they're behind here in that one. They did their final mini-split installation. Now they have full coverage throughout their building outside of their gym. All the classrooms have been fully air and heat pumped, and they did that out of the town warrant, out of their stabilization fund. In Deerfield, they had a front renovation project. They haven't been around the front of that building. It's a beautiful new opening, but that was a multiple source, came from MVP, grant, town warrant, and school choice money. They got through two, they actually finished, they got through two sections of doing their heat pump mini-split over the summer using a town warrant, school choice, and then in there, they rebated back directly, went to the town, but they gave it back directly, the rebate, so we could fold it right back into doing more mini-splits. Excuse me. They got a new phone system as well. You can see a pattern in our buildings here, but again, that was out of technology budget funds. Then they also had end-of-year funds and some school choice funds to redo the side entrance with a new cement walkway. This was a paved walkway. There was an other mess, and there was no curb here, and parents picking up cars, using cars going through here, there was no curb for the actual safety. So that's nice that was finished off. They also had a video surveillance installation using their SR3 money, the final amounts of that there. They already had one, but this was additional, so now they have full coverage in all their playgrounds and such. They are doing new classroom flooring where they do three rooms at a time, and so they were able to do three more rooms as well. And then on to Frontier, we did phase one of the roof for 461,000, and it went very well for the first phase of roast. And we're very curious to, for change orders, only around $10,000, $12,000 were, you know, additional wet spots they found when doing insulation. You know, the good news is that, the kind of the good news that you found additional wet spots, meaning it had to get done, meaning the damage was starting to occur, and, you know, they were able to get that first phase done. So they did bleacher repair. They replaced the whole bleacher set in the gym. The walking cooler that was supposed to be done, it was funded in FY23, finally got around to, finally getting the parts, and it wasn't really, we didn't have all the parts except last summer, so it has to be done during the summer due to the amount of time it's going to take and the fact that they have to keep that running kitchen. Softet painting, it came in under $10,000, so under a capital project, but it was projected over, but, you know, we had to bring in equipment. While that's preventative maintenance, these are things that are, we can't do without, you know, calling outside sources and, you know, the projected amount that would be over. So when people say painting is, you know, is ongoing maintenance, you know, these kind of things are larger than what our maintenance budget can handle. And they also have miscellaneous tree removal. And Deerfield also helped with some of the cost because it was on the tree line between the town of Deerfield and us at the track, but bring that out, and then over in Sunderland. So a little slower through here. We cut the first phase of the mini-split heat pump installation. We did nine classrooms, so now two or eleven rooms have it. And so in two phases, 18 units remain to complete the project, and so we'll get that money back, the money goes back to the town, and then they can decide if they want to kind of add that to our project next year. We try, we're trying to get in there here to do that. Off of the town warrant, we had the electrical upgrades. Ben can explain that someone's child in the closet when I said get pictures in there. Very nice. The rimband repairs, as you know, for those who are new, we broke this project, so very clear what the problem is here with the, you can kind of see they're working on it there around the whole building. So we had broken that up into five phases at around just over $10,000 a phase so that we could do this without taking away and also do other capital projects because it needed to be done, but it could be done in phases. So it was kind of the way we approached it. But we got four, phases four and five done this year. Last summer, they didn't do phase four because the contractor wasn't able to get out and do the job. So, oops, sorry. Window replacement. So this one, I did send some emails along the way to tell you where things were at, but it's a good time to ask questions on. So we had funded this project at 91,000, and when they started to do the windows, they had to do asbestos testing, and asbestos was found in the window glazing. And so we needed to do asbestos abatement, and, you know, for just, you know, just about $50,000. I went back to the town select board in July and talked to them about the use of ARPA funds. They were very, I would say generous, I mean, their money was generous, but they were also very understanding and knew that this, you know, we had to do that, we were, you know, set to go, the windows were on-site, ready to be installed. There was also, as you can see, the rot in the picture. It's a good close-up of that. So there was some additional change order, about $5,000 with a rock repair as well. So it did come in at 166,000, so significantly over where we're at, but the project did finish nicely, and so we were able to move it along. But again, great cooperation between us and the town, and thank you for all of them for, the select board for stepping in and helping us out because I guess if we could have just put the whole project on hold and wait for more funding. Let me say anything here? Nope.
I'm curious, given the age of the building, how is it possible it was built without asbestos?
So it was actually in the window itself or the window. So apparently it still can be found in some things. You can go to Home Depot and buy products with asbestos in it, and it falls right into asbestos abatement. One, you know, one can question the asbestos protocols, like they have to put every window, they got to encapsulate it when it's not, you know, airborne and such, but I'm sure an asbestos person will come in and argue with me, but it's not like, I don't want to send any worries out there. It's not like, you know, these old, some of the old asbestos thing we think where they line the pipes and the dust is coming off, that's asbestos. You know, there was nothing, you know, it was airborne and that kind of thing. Like, you know, in the hallways, those tiles, many of the domestic that puts the tiles in is made from asbestos. So, you know, tile jobs in hallways many times are going to require abatement and that kind of thing. I'm not sure about these. I'm just saying in general, like asbestos still exists in our buildings, and we were surprised. And so when I called, we used, I called another consultant from out of the town who serves on the select board, who was trustworthy. He said, I wouldn't have believed that there was asbestos in those, that year, and was a different, only it started using brands and, you know, snob branding, snob branding, but he said, you know, our company moved away from asbestos 10 years prior to that, you know, so I wouldn't imagine it had been in there, but, you know, I don't know what happened when they put the windows in. Hate to say little bit, you know, those kind of things. But yeah, it's a good question because we had the same thing. We were like, what? And then this can't be, and really, we have to put, each one of these has to be encapsulated, and, you know, it's just more labor-intensive, it has to be disposed of properly, and so you got to pay more for disposal. It's a big ordeal. So. Any questions on any of the Sunderland ones? And then weightly because they're W. Um they had electrical upgrades. They're in the same kind of, they're in the same uh things you guys are in this. And obviously their electrical upgrades cost a lot more. They had more to do. They started there. Um they did one half of their building doing six classrooms. Um and they need six minutes remaining to do their whole building outside of gym and um their library, like yours, were already done. Um they used ARPA money to clean their duct system. They have a significantly more duct system than some of the other schools. They are doing bathrooms, a few each year. Um you probably will see us in our. Next month, I'll be bringing forward the capital planning for this month, this school, so we can start to, you know, talking about. But they did, you know, a couple each year so that they can move along and then start the improvement. That was just a cute picture. This isn't a capital thing, but they did some carpeting as well. And then they had, they had some metal door jams that rusted at the bottom. And so they did three doors. Two are complete, one's in progress. Um but they went to a town warrant to get those um steel door jams replaced. Oh, and then they had a problem middle of the summer about they have a dry system, fire system, and it started leaking during the summer. And I had to go to the town of um Waitley and go to their select board and ask for ARPA money. Uh I just asked for money. They haven't used ARPA. To repair that system middle of the summer because we don't have the funds over there either for that kind of repair. So anyway, that was the excitement of the summer.
Thanks. No questions? Alright, go on to uh policies. First reading of updated policy I H B G. We can go through all of the policies together.
Will you do them all together?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, sure. So the first one is a policy that does not really affect the elementary schools. Um but it is uh changes to their homeschooling policy. Um and basically. You can see what I've crossed it out versus putting you in, that only students who attend. And enroll in regular attends at Frontier Union thirty eight schools will be eligible to participate in interest classic athletic program, student government and student activity programs, or to graduate from Frontier Regional. The current policy has it um that's at discretion of superintendent. And um I really. First, I want to establish that this is not, there was some, I've been hearing online because I've made some other presentations that. People who are involved with like Frontier Youth Soccer or that, just because it has a term Frontier on it, it's not a school program. You'd have to be enrolled at Frontier Middle and High School. The sports offered by that um school are the sports they're talking about interest classic sports. So you know Frontier Football, you football or Frontier. You know, the soccer, the baseball, all those kind of things are not are not affected by this. Those are rec programs or private um. Private local programs. So I just want to make that clear because there was some something online um or saying such. Um my reason for this is one, um you know, I don't think it should just be on one person's decision where there can be, you know, um. Again, I'm one person alone. There's a good just, it could change from each person who steps into the position at lack of consistency. And my other concern is that we, different than thirty years ago or forty years ago, when the first this was originally written. We we talk about student athletes is more than just someone who shows up to play sports. Or shows up to be in a drama program or some of the other extracurricular activities. More and more schools are asked to look at the whole child. And what we do within our programming at Frontier is to be working on the whole child from leadership trainings to. Anti bullying and harassment to all these things that schools are responsible for. Um and homeschooling students aren't, you know, able to be a part of that because a lot of that is happening during the school day. And so I, a part of how I feel about it is, and you know, everybody has their own opinions on this, but is that um. You can't pick and choose your curriculum within the school. I believe extracurricular activities are an extension of the curriculum of the school and and it should be set up that way. From the state perspective, we they aren't considered part of our foundation enrollment. So if you're homeschool, they fall off our roles. We don't get extra funding for them. Um so that's also, it's it's not, this is not a monetary driven thing, but it's a side effect to, they're not even considering our roles. They're not even in our computer system. As recognized by the state. Um there is a, you'll be seeing more about this as it's going to be hitting other communities as I'm hearing it's happening in other, people are making this policy change across the state. There also is on a social front, there's an ine, I believe in inequity, while there's a far range of programming within homeschooling. There's a minimum that they have to provide to me in order to homeschool, but those homeschooling programs range from taking, you know, some parents who go above and beyond. To some that are maybe the minimum criteria where all our students have to be academically eligible and they're held to the same standard. As well as accountable to their attendance um and their behavior. And so there are all things that are connected to um our extracurricular activities that um is very difficult to do through homeschooling. So those are the reasons. I'm asking for a change on that. And I also believe that in order to receive a diploma from Frontier, you should go to Frontier. If you you achieve what the Frontier criteria that's set by the school committee, which represents the community for the values and standards that the school has. And so if people don't want to have that, that's that's, you know, there's nothing against homeschooling. If they, you certainly can do their their own thing on that. But they're choosing not to be a part of that. So long explanation there, but I'm saying that because there is a lot of online chatter. Um I think some of the information was misinterpreted. Um and maybe I didn't say it clear enough. And there's also concern that um. You know, for some, this will be an opportunity. They won't be able to participate in Frontier activities. So it doesn't really affect you at this one, but I do want to hear, you know. You'll time to review it. We'll discuss it because it's a first read. You know, it is a philosophy and without your agree to that philosophy is important for me to hear as well. So. That was a longer one, but I think I didn't do as well with job at one of the other meetings or two of the other meetings, three of the other meetings, you can say. The next one, the next group of, we're going to skip over on the agenda. The next section of um policies are coming to us from M A S C. That then went through your law offices, your attorney's Dupree law offices. They gave us a marked up version of the ones that came from M A S C. Uh but basically with Title Nine changes that happened in August, your policies need to change to reflect those changes. Okay? And so you have A C A to nondiscriminate, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, A C A, nondiscrimination basis of sex. Again. A C A A, I'm going to come back to, but that's nondiscrimination on basis of sector of gendered identity. That one's a little bit different. You have sexual and sex based harassment and retaliation. You have nondiscrimination, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex under Title Nine, including sex based harassment. And so they feel that you need all these. I know some of them are repetitive and whatever, but they they are recommending um that they all be brought forward. Nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. That's at the regional. It's an R. Um which is slightly different. I believe that's it. So if you have questions on those. Before next meeting, you know, you're coming with it, let me know ahead of time because these are coming from our attorney. So I can ask if they're complicated. I want to go there. A C A A is a little bit different. Our gender identity policy, this was actually a product of our anti-racial equity committee last year. Um this is, uh they did this and we'll call it the spring semester work for them. Basically, they took a look at this this policy and while the policy protected. Gender identity in um discrimination against, it didn't do it in a in a friendly way that says we see you and you are part of our community. And um there are a subcommittee or the committee of A and E, the smaller group of us. Put together language, um looked at their policies that had good language and kind of felt pretty, we thought was good. We then sent it to Frontiers. L G B T Q plus club and asked for student input on it. Um we got input from them and any input that wasn't even connected to the policy. What input they did give us toward the policy was also added to this. And so it really um was kind of, you know, developed there. And if you read through it, you can see it says it, but it says it explains what we're doing, how we're doing it and why we're doing it. So um I think it reads a lot better than a normal policy and we thought that was important to do. So. Alright?
I'm looking at the, so I'm in the A C A section. It says, um file A C A nondiscrimination. On the basis of sex. And I'm looking at, there's a, there's a fill in the blank kind of. You see, it says notice of nondiscrimination and related. Title nine information. So there's a little thing, there's fill in the blank. What are the blanks for?
You know what? You don't have.
I have a different one.
You have a different one. We filled in the blanks. So they give us the template and then we put in, right, everybody else is, everybody else has like the number, the information built in there. Because the one I in front of me has it filled in. So we filled it in that they, you know, they want us to make sure we label.
So that is done now. Okay, I'll find out. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks. So that's the first reading. So next month we will vote on those policies. Handbook?
Handbook, yes. So we, I sent you out the marked up version of the handbook. We are trying to consolidate. The four elementary schools, the main components of the handbooks be consistent in all four of the elementary schools. Years ago, they were four separate handbooks. They were each, were individually updated each year. We then tried to do a little bit of an online model um with tab system, but last year um we went district wide to pull all our handbooks together. There's still a section for each school. And um. One of the plans was that this project was overzealous in getting it done, thinking it was going to get done by mid-July. So they could go to principals that we could reduce it even further. But as we evolve this handbook, the next renovation would. rendition for the following year would be to, if there's anything else amongst the elementary schools that can be consolidated to, to limit each school handbook to be. You know, really just based on individual things like bus pickup and, you know, you know, the after school care and how things are different there. But a lot of our general policies, we all have the same, we have the same. Handbook. We all have the same policies. Our handbook should, really should look very similar about how we're treating absences and how we're, you know. All those kind of things within the handbook. And you can see that pattern in there. The one thing in your handout that is there, it seems extremely long, but if you go to the digital version, it's online. Everything's clickable to jump. So you go to the table contents, you click on it, it takes you right there. All the links in the handbook. Um are live so that if you, I used bullying once, I know I said that from the beginning, but if you go to bullying and you want to report bullying, the link is right there to take you to the bullying thing. Or, you know, harassment or whatever. Whatever within the handbook is there. So it's a lot better than the um. You know, the word doc we were using before. So while you guys got in a PDF with all the markups, it it, that that was probably tedious to go through. But the handbook is probably easier, but that way you get to solve, see the changes.
The highlighting was.
The highlighting where the changes, yeah.
Uh procedurally, do we need to vote on this next one?
Yes. You should. Procedure, uh you know, other committees have voted on this month.
Okay, our agenda does not say we're taking a vote.
It should have. I suppose procedurally you can wait till next month to vote it.
Let's just do it.
I would just do it.
For next month.
I mean, we're already, we're using it and that's kind of the way it always is, you know what I mean? And I believe substantive change to policies, a lot of it's language and that, you're not changing your.
Yeah.
You know, Frontier had voted, they changed their cell phone policy. You know what I mean? Like you guys didn't have any major changes outside a lot of clarifying language. So we can vote it next month.
Let let's follow the rules and just do the vote next month.
Okay.
It doesn't need to take long.
Yeah.
So can I ask, but so there's a section on school climate and we're saying that's the same for all four. Schools. And there's a, there's in the, I'm in the um. Table contents, it's all alphabetical. There's safety and security, which I assume is probably the same everywhere. But with school climate. Habits of mind, all s- um all school community meetings, um zones of regulation, all that's the same in all four elementary schools? There's that there.
Go up to where you should mean exactly.
So I'm on the um, just in the the parent handbook and it's, it's like page three or. Oh, wait, maybe it's. Maybe I missed reading. So it says Waitley. Elementary and then there's a for all elementary schools.
Yep.
And it's got uh equipment and then you keep going down. Curriculum obviously is the same, roughly, roughly grades. Norms, but do we all do the same thing with curriculum nights in open houses? Communication, curriculum night. I know Deerfield just had theirs.
Yeah, for, I mean, the open, open house. Back to school night um varies from school to school, right?
Yeah.
And so there's some.
So the language on quick night, it says curriculum night is a school sponsored activity held typically in the fall, mid September to introduce parents and guardians, their teachers and the curriculum being taught in the school. So it's the same.
As our open house, yeah.
Yeah, it's your open house.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point though, right? It should be curriculum night slash open house.
Right, because they're, because yeah, Deerfield just did curriculum night, which is similar, but different than what we do for home and house. We do, yeah. But things like the, there's a five, that's who it says. Safety and security, that's the same. But the school climate part is one I wonder, and maybe Ben, you know, or the Dershow, I'm sure you do, you know, the zones of regulation. Um mindfulness. Um restorative justice, I believe all do. I mean, so is that all? See, do you sure I am now? That's all same at all the schools with school climate stuff? Habits of mind. Social justice commitment is, and it's definitely the same. All school community meetings or all four schools doing all school community meetings? Yeah, okay, just different, maybe different topics, alright, that varies. Principles decide that, okay. Alright, and then the five point scale is the same at all? Okay. No, I learn something every day. It's good. Great, that's it. Thanks.
Right, and even when you read through them, like mindfulness, you know.
It's good.
If if you read it, it's like, eh, if you're not doing it, it's not asking, you know, it's just saying you've developed skills of self-awareness and self-regulation. I hope we're doing, we're not calling that. We'll be, you know, you know, we'll be, we'll be introducing that language to that. I mean, I did, I think that mindfulness does come over from. Deerfield or Waitley, so um but yes.
Okay.
You know, a lot of that stuff comes out of the second step.
Yeah, no, I like, I think it's great to stream. I I think I was talking to someone about this before, just having all four. Elementary schools. Understand what they're doing in each place because sometimes we don't. And that's always really nice what um Jess and Carrie did, having that mentoring meeting um like two weeks ago.
And there's also consistent responsive classroom practices across all the elementary schools. So it all, you know, it's, uh each hand holds one another with all this.
No, I like this being all together. So that's it. That's good. Thanks.
Thanks. Alright, so we talked to us about the strategic plan plan.
Wonderful, thank you. So. Basically. When I did entry plan, seven years ago, I created a strategic plan. Um and. That plan, you know, it was supposed to be a five year plan. Covid hit and kind of put a pause within middle of the plan. And then as Covid, we came out of Covid, we just kept on extending this five year plan and got us through seven years. Um it's time to put a new plan together. And so myself, Sarah Mitchell and Laura Ramsey. Put together an outline to get, we really started, you know, we have the pillars of where we're going in some of our areas. But we haven't built a, built a plan this year that got community input into it for a very long time. I'm trying to think back the last time we did it with community, direct community input. It's been a while. And so what we're going to, I'm proposing putting forward is to, the plan this year is to develop our strategic plan, develop our next five years. Um our school improvement plans, which is, you know, directly affects the elementary schools are built off those plans. The current plan that we have has the structures in it for us to build a school improvement plan out of. And then with Ben. And the school council puts it together. He can explain where they pulled it from. Uh but uh what we want to do this year is, first of all, announce to the community that we're doing this. Um we have a, we are in the process of developing a survey to get families' input about how things are going in school, what they like, what they value, those kind of things. We then are looking to do during, from October to November. Coffee and conversations with the five schools and um. And I have the dates there and they'll be sending us out to um families shortly after you guys see it. Um we also have a virtually meeting as well um in the evening for those who couldn't, have suggestions that came from another school community. Um in between, in December, we're going to build something called the Portrait of Student Success. Or it could also be called the Portrait of a Graduate. It's like, basically says, what do our students look like when they leave here? What skills and. Skills they have and in, you know, what do we value that they're able to do from being active members in the community to um. Being self-confident to academic. From being active members in the community to um, you know, being self-confident to academics.
So, Darius, quickly, um, are there checkpoints, so are you gonna have like graduating year from sixth grade and eighth grade and 12th grade or just the finishing student 12th grade?
I think, you know what, I haven't developed it yet, right? But you know, we say, I think that if we say the, the portrait of a student and the portrait of a graduate, I, I think, I'm looking at two because I think we want to see where we are along the way instead of, and some of the skill set may not be what a fourth grader, we're looking at from a fourth grader may feel too distant when we say, this is what we want our graduates to do when they're 18.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I think a portrait of a student would be like, what does our sixth grader look like? You know what I mean? And then what does our 12th grader look like?
Yeah.
And when you look at some of these, we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel here, a lot of districts are doing this kind of approach and that's, we're stealing it, um, borrowing it or, you know, professional norming it. It's kind of, it gets a, it allows you to see the different components that make up a student. It's not just what their standardized test scores are, but you know, you know, is empathy an important thing? And how do they, do students have empathy and how do they express empathy? You know what I mean? Versus, you know, self-strength and all that. So there's all these different things that you can have. Um, and when you build that into a strategic plan, then you can say, well, how are you going about doing that? So how do you, you know, we believe like leadership or strength, well, what opportunities are we doing that within our planning, within our school improvement plan and that kind of stuff? So you can see how that comes down, it just makes it a lot more um standards and that kind of stuff are very, are not public, but friendly, they get very lost in that. Desi has plenty of them.
Right.
Um, but this will allow people to kind of see, like, oh, I can see how this connected and I see where those values are.
And, and do you envision Frontier being a regional rural school, that there'll be certain aspects of a graduate of Frontier that'd be different than a graduate of Braintree or Newton?
I don't know, because I haven't got there yet.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that'll make it unique.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, things that we'd want a Frontier resident or graduate that lives in this area to have when they leave Frontier.
Yeah.
Then you might, you know, um, you know, Lexington might not, you know, it's very different. I, I mean, I'm just throwing it out, I know you've still got it up there, but I'd love to help with some of that too if you want, because I've, I've done some of it in other places.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, so the idea is kind of going through, so in December, we're putting together those portraits.
Right.
Then we have the writing of the strategic plan, um, January to February, mid-February, then we'll do a SWOT analysis, which is just basically a formal way of kind of um, looking at strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats. But it's really like, it's a way to go through it systematically and look for um, strengths and weaknesses and other stuff in there. Um, and then we'll bring it back to school committee formally at the joint meeting um to present it and then, and then get feedback, make some adjustments and then put it into play for the following school year. Um, we will give updates along the way um as well of where we're at. Um, I think especially probably in January, when we'll, maybe we'll have the portraits, where we should have the portrait of each to kind of look at where, where we're headed and I think that will be helpful um, get feedback there. So this is a draft of the draft, so if, if people have ideas or that kind of stuff, my approach here is that some, some communities, when they do their strategic planning, obviously some communities are, I mean, there's some communities that are larger than Franklin County. Um, you know, they hire outside consultants, it's a big, you know, many, multiple nights and, you know, these kind of things of getting community kind of thing. Um, I'm trying to do a balanced approach based on the size of our community, um, the capacity of the administrative team to, to take on um, and making sure we're getting feedback, but not going overboard um as well. So in finding that balance, you know, feedback is welcome, um, but that's kind of the game plan for this year's development of that.
So Ben, did you share some of the listening session feedback with Darius from last year? Because that feed, that can feed into some of this, and we started some of that last year with listening sessions, yeah. Because I love it. It came from you in your office that, or just?
Well, no, actually, I, actually I didn't say that, thank, this is a good, these are good feeder questions, you're pitching me well here. The um, the administrative team met during the summer.
Yeah.
And that's when we do our, we do our strategic planning and we were building in what we're doing, you know, this is where we're headed in certain areas and we were kind of like, you know what, it's, this is missing something, like we just keep on, you know, I imagine we keep on stacking Legos under the same thing when we really should be taking it down and rebuilding and so um, that kind of thing. So it really came from that meeting that said, um, it's time to kind of blow this up and, and, and start anew. Even though the, what's also very difficult is you've got to remember the administrative team in this district, they're very little turnover, you know, we had the um, you know, even through COVID, so many other school districts have were turned upside down. Their team has been together for so long, it also, we got to be careful that we don't just get, well, this is how we do it. And this is, you know, the next thing, and this is a good way to take a step back and say, let's infuse um, some new ideas and different perspectives into it. Because the same team will give you the same thing unless you do something like that, so.
I could see Laura being all over this too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's a driver, she's a driver behind this, absolutely. You can see her quiet hand behind this, absolutely. Alright, thank you.
Seems like a lot of work to be done by a small group, thank you for taking it all on. Don't work too hard over Christmas vacation.
Yeah, yeah, well, the idea is, yeah, the hope is to get that done prior, well, you know, it is also ambitious timelines and so we'll see, you know what I mean?
It's exciting, thanks.
Yep.
Our next agenda item says negotiation subcommittee and SIC bank request.
So the association approached me in late May, early June um about would we um, look at the SIC bank, um, how the SIC bank works, they have a proposed idea. You know, the SIC bank is a negotiated um portion in the contract. They'd ask, we, you know, we've had such problems with it in the sense that the way it's set up is not how many other districts do it, where there's a bank, there's really, actually if you, someone becomes ill, people donate to that person. And it really can cause friction in a building, they asked if we could address it sooner than later, they didn't want to go through another school year. Um, and with the negotiating, will the, would the school committee assign someone to it? Or would it be the person on the negotiating, um, who's already been assigned a negotiating person? Be willing to meet, to, to discuss it, any changes, we'll have to come back to the school committees, a memorandum of understanding. Um, it could also be um, you know, it could also be sunsetted for one year and then it, and then we can issue, we get it put into the full contract. Um, it is a benefit that they have as part of their collective bargaining, um, but it's a benefit that doesn't, it's really about, if it's not working well, it just hurts them, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt the district, it doesn't hurt the, the running of the district, it hurts them, you know what I mean? So um, I have no problem with us pushing it up process-wise, timing-wise, it's gonna be a lot from the same people because it's gonna, things are gonna get busy with negotiations really soon. Um, but um, maybe we can get it done in the next few weeks, you're the last meeting to do this, so once I get the okay and the person who's doing it, you know, tomorrow I'll be setting up the meeting with them, so.
So this would just be the four negotiations reps, we don't need select board reps to do this negotiating?
No, this is, we're gonna do an MOU.
Okay, yeah.
Or MOA. Okay, we're doing a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum.
So what do you need from us? Are you just informing us this is happening?
I mean, informing it's happening, but who would like to do it? It could be the person who's already negotiating, in the negotiating, so.
That's me, I'm happy to do this, I belong to SIC banks, I get it.
Okay, so. So you'll be there, I'll be reaching out to you very shortly.
Great.
Alright. And any association members listening, get an email from me probably tomorrow. Alright.
And then we have a vote to accept an anonymous donation.
During the summer, a member of our community um donated eight hundred dollars to the summer program for scholarships for students. Um, and we need to accept that.
I make a motion that we accept the donation.
I second the motion.
Can we say what the amount is? It's like nine hundred something.
Shelley, do you know the exact amount on that donation? I thought it was eight hundred straight.
Seven hundred ninety.
Okay.
If someone was to put a ten on the table, it would be eight hundred, right, so seven hundred ninety dollars.
Nonous donation, seven hundred ninety dollars, seconded by Joe. Any discussion?
I got the ten.
Um, since Luai is online, now we have to do a roll call vote, so Amanda.
Yes.
Joe.
Joe, yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Luai.
Yes.
Thank you, five zero. Um, on to reports of the committee and the chair. Any committee report?
Collaborative meets tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Uh, next time.
Great, um, I did not mentally organize to, to give updates, but I, I forgot my sticky note from a select board meeting, so I've, my husband sent me a photo of my sticky note. Um, so back in June, the select board discussed um, the future of the school building roof. Um, they agreed that we should not try to go to the Massachusetts School Building Association, which would, we would have to keep delaying the, the um, the roof replacement. Uh, there's strong support from the select board and the energy committee, commission, whatever their committee, um, for considering putting solar on the roof, we, we would need to get sort of an engineering study to see if the roof could support it. So that needs to be done before we actually replace the shingles, what should be added?
So what was interesting about that conversation, I, I, because I learned a lot today and realized that, um, so they brought in, what was the, the woman's name, if you remember who she was? They brought in somebody who had a background in it, basically, um, right now, we are pulling solar from the field next door, right? And we are ready to use, when that is fully um, in full array, I guess, in warm terms, but you know what I'm trying to say? When it's getting full sun, we are, we are taking, um, it's giving us more than we need, okay? During the, the darkest months of winter, we have to, we have to, you know, um, we have to take some off the grid. The problem is if you were to suddenly say boom, let's just say, and then they put solar on the top of this building tomorrow, cover every square inch of it, we would not be using it in this building, because we are already using it from the stuff next door. And so then you have to work with the um, the electric companies to take that energy off of our roof and put it into the grid and that takes a significant amount of infrastructure.
Right.
And so you really, when you want to be, when you want to be putting, I thought, I just wanted to make sure someone was raising their hand who knows more than me on this. Let me, do you?
That, I know a bit.
Um, so the uh, so saying all that, she was saying it, like you may not want to be putting solar on this building in town, you may want to be like putting on the library so then the library can use that energy directly and you're not paying, because you're gonna pay a premium to take it off our roof and put it into the grid to go into town.
Right.
You know what I mean? And so, and they ran into the same kind of problems in the Deerfield one where they're trying to build on the, on the, on the old dump. But because they have to get ever source to come in to build the structure to be able to take that power, store that power and then send it out. So there was question about whether or not, I read into it that it may, this may not be the best place in town to do that. I think the town needs to really have that discussion if they're gonna invest in it. The other question is, you know, can we, when we do, we need to have an engineering done, because on any time a roof job of, you can't just say, hey, go replace the shingles, we gotta have engineering done again. Um, we could very easily say, can it support? And, you know, throw a few extra thousand dollars on to do the energy study about whether I could support and how you would run um, the electrical on the roof, um, you know, conduits or, you know, the different kind of things as, as part of that study. And I think that's where they kind of let it, they left it. Would you agree that there's, if I remember properly?
Yeah, I was there, I remember that.
That's right.
It was the second meeting, which I didn't attend.
That's right, great, so, um, sorry, I didn't need to play this, but you're right, you were there. Um, that was kind of what I, you know, it was, it was like, let's, you know, so let's do the, we have to do that study anyways for the engineering of the roof and then we can look at that, but it was just very interesting. I didn't know that about the power going in, that, you know, this may not be the best site in town and if the town wants to put power on buildings, maybe it should look at, you know, the police fire station or whatever to offset the power used there. Will be a greater bang for your buck than to put it on here, unless you have a lot, a large amount of outside money coming in that makes it, that covers all that, but right now, um, they're not sure about that. So a lot of conversations on it, but it wasn't like, I didn't walk away like, wow, we should just put solar on the roof because you look at this roof and you're like, why not? It's the right way it's facing, it's like huge, but it's, it's, it's more, hate to say it's complicated, but it sometimes sounds demeaning, but it's more complicated than that because there are a lot of other factors there.
Yeah, I didn't know we were tied to this grid, but.
In fact, it goes right to the school.
Yeah, did not know that.
Yep.
And are the needs of the building gonna change in the next numbers anyway? So will it start to use more?
Right, the other question is, so you look at the overall age of the building and you say, so, you know, you're gonna have to put a new roof on it, but if you're gonna put solar on that as well, you know, where is the building gonna be in, in, in twenty years? And, you know, or thirty years, probably, you know, thirty year roof, that kind of thing. So it becomes the other question of what the structure is underneath it at this age as well. So you look at this building, um, I mean, we're making repairs to it to last the next twenty years. But it's a good question, that as well, so. But the energy committee was very knowledgeable, they were all over it and so, um, and that was great to hear too.
Thanks for adding to that, yeah. Guess the other thing I can report, uh, this summer for the first time, I served on the resolutions committee for MISC uh, where we reviewed um, resolutions, including the rural schools resolution that came from us. Um, and we advanced all ten of them to the delegate assembly um, at the MISC and MAS joint conference in Hyannis in November. Um, so that was just an interesting process to sit down with school committee members from across the state and discuss resolutions with real world implications. Any other updates? Collaborative meets tomorrow, superintendent report please.
Yeah, so it's everything we already talked about and the only thing I had, I believe, on mine that I added was um, again, a public, although I said it in other ones, um, the question number two regarding MCAS is gonna be on the ballot this fall. Um, I'm just pointing out there that there is some confusion that I hear people talking about, that it's eliminating MCAS. It is not, you will still be using MCAS as the standardized test um, for the state of Massachusetts. It's talking about eliminating it as a graduation requirement. And so I just want people when they, as you, as you guys are educational leaders in the community, to make sure if you haven't read about that, um, there's a lot of literature sent out from MASC where you can go online and kind of read about it, but um, people are saying like, I hate MCAS, we should get rid of that testing, the testing's still going to occur. Um, it's just no longer going to be a benchmark for graduates, so. Just wanted to put that out there.
Any other business before we adjourn? No, look for a motion to adjourn.
On the show, adjourn.
Carrie said she seconded, sorry.
Megan, seconded.
Megan, Megan.
Megan, Megan. Alright, uh, we gotta do the roll call, Luai.
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Megan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
We are adjourned at seven eleven, thanks everybody.